It was, it was raining like crazy. That was, that was some good rain. I should do that about every once a week.
All right, we're back at the records. Scott?
Scott Crowder, Event Director/Business Manager for the Bonnus Complex and the Event Center. Last week, we talked a little about the contract with Southeast Idaho Youth Football League. We had talked about moving it back to, from a three-year contract to a one-year contract, changing a few pieces of, a little terminology in the contract as far as vendors were concerned. And then there was a discussion on the shed. Wes and I met yesterday and talked a little about a proposal to essentially trade the value of the shed for the value of the use of the fields for a year. I know that Wes had some concerns about, I'm not going to speak for him, just kind of give an introduction, but some concerns about either the continued use of the field or some sort of clause that will essentially allow if they couldn't rent the shed, that they could buy it back from us. So that was kind of a point that I felt maybe we needed to bring to the group, to you guys, to discuss that aspect. And so...
Get it back and move it?
Yes, yes. So if we arranged to buy it for $5,000, right, and essentially trade and waive fees for $5,000, if for some reason they weren't able to use the shed because we decided that they, that somebody else, maybe we were going to try to rent it to somebody else, they would have the ability to then buy the shed and move it at their expense for the same price they paid for it. Or we put something in the contract that essentially gives them a right of first refusal, and then that would probably alleviate the need for that second clause to buy back.
I'd rather let them buy it back instead of committing other commissioners down the line.
Okay. So, so we could, I mean hypothetically, we could, I don't know if that satisfies the, the questions or concerns that you had, but if we said the value of the shed was $5,000, and we're just kind of throwing out an arbitrary number, the total field costs for the year is $17,400, that's the full fee. Last year, these guys paid around $3,000. Previous to that, it was $1,800. So that we have increased the fees a little bit, but if we said, or, not a little bit, I mean it's actually what?
Sixty-three percent.
It's a decent amount, but if we said that the cost of the shed was $5,000, that $5,000 gets you the field rentals for this year plus the rental of the shed for the year. And then we just said that if, in the event, you guys don't have the ability to rent the shed, they could buy the shed back at that $5,000 price tag and move it at their expense.
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd add to that is it'd be that at what we sold it, or the lesser value of the fair market value. So let's say this is sort of 20 years from now, and we, and for whatever reason, decide to buy the shed and it's only worth $2,000. So then we would pay $2,000 for it at that time. So $5,000 if we were next year. I mean, this is just, and again, this is all, again, it's all good faith. We're trying to make this, you know, equitable for both sides. So, you know, the league has been a part of this community for 55 years. I mean, three of us up here have been a part of this league for 45 years, I mean, literally 35 years. So, I mean, Saturday will be seven to eight thousand people on the field. So it's one of the largest single-day events here in Pocatello every year that we have. And then when you add it up for the full year, we've got 40, 45,000 people that will attend all of our games. So in terms, I mean, Scott was here last year, he had, you know, a zoo, which, you know, for us was like, yeah, it was an extremely busy day, we had a lot of people, and we get a lot of people that come up and watch the games. They're not specifically parents or relatives of the team, they're just coming to watch the games. You know, and with our new partnerships now, we got, we got mini cashers, so we got people from Burleigh and Twin Falls coming to the games, and we got people coming from Idaho Falls. Now, we've also partnered up games with Idaho Falls Upper Valley, which we had, wasn't there until when you were playing. So we got teams from, you know, Madison, Winby, so we got people coming in. So that's really adding to the number, obviously. And so, and again, it becomes a, you know, an event-like day for, for the program and for the community. And so, you know, the bottom line is, we're just trying to do something that's fair for everybody, that is equitable for, for our program, and equitable for the community at large, and the kids and the parents, players trying to keep their costs at a minimum. I mean, that's one of the things that we pride ourselves, that we, we provide a, I think we provide a very good program at a low cost, especially when we compare, when we see the comps at Idaho Falls, players play Madison, they're paying $250, plus having another $100 deposit for their equipment. And they're at $150, which includes pitchers, you know. So we do a lot of things to try to keep the costs extremely down for everybody. So, you know, so the bottom line is, I just want to make sure that it's fair and equitable for both sides. And I think being able to have the first right to rent the shed, obviously, is, is key. And then also have the ability, if for some reason we want to buy back at whatever we sold it, or fair market value, you know, that could be next year, it might be 10 years. I mean, I might have a farmer come in next year, you know, Mr. Hart, that donated all that property, and then Mr. Hart, he might come back and say, hey, I've got 100 acres. This little kitty corner where we were at, there's a, they've got a deep well there, it's a 250-foot deep well that's literally on the corner, and I'll, we'll donate the plant. And so we may take the shed and say, hey, I'm going to buy back the shed and we're going to go build fields. But who knows? I mean, I'm just saying, that's, that's, that could happen, but who knows? But just so that we're, we're taking care of both sides, so, so if neither side's out, I mean, the county's not out, we're comfortable in buying, you're going to get a little bit back on some rent and fees increase. So, so in good faith, we started this five, six years ago, several commissioners, this commissioner group plus several, six or eight other commissioners, in getting the $18,000 negotiated, and what was fair, and every year since. And then last year, we came in and it was increased to $3,000 through analysis, that that's what seemed like a fair price. So we'd accepted that, and then Scott came back and said, hey, we're going to, we're going to keep adding a little 3% adder. We said, okay, let's make it five and include the rent of the shed, and then it's kind of all rolled up. And so, so that's kind of been what we've been doing. And so, again, just to be fair to everybody, to lay into the community at large, because, you know, when you're talking, we impact thousands of families today, and I've got tens of thousands of families that we've impacted yesterday, before, and thousands of families are going to be impacted tomorrow. So just trying to keep it all, you know, reasonable for everybody. And that's all I, that's all I really want to say.
So does the, as far as the commission's concerned, is the, the trade for the shed for the field, and then right to buy back? For, and this is a one-year?
For me personally, I don't, I don't have a problem with the first right of refusal in there. Because with a first right of refusal, all's that saying is, before we go rent this to somebody else, or we go let that somebody else, we're going to give whoever's been there in the planning process the ability to, to do that. Now, there are some things that are in there. That doesn't mean that fees still can't change or things still can't be done. What that's meaning is, if we're going to change something, we're going to let you guys have the first right. And I like this for two reasons. And we've seen it, the, almost six years I've been here and the guys before, the guys before, there's some issues, and what we found out, if you can't just lease a piece of ground for indefinite, indefinite period of time with no fees nor anything, that violates state law. Can't do that. But what it does protect from is, you know what? I like lacrosse better than football, so I'm just going to go run it out to somebody else. And I'm not going to let you guys have the ability to say, well, hey, we're here, we meet whatever they're meant to work on. So I don't necessarily have a problem with the first right of refusal, because it's not a binding, because it's not necessarily part of the contract. It gives you the ability to look at it, and if you don't want to take those terms, you cannot take those terms and move on.
Right.
I do like having a shorter contract period, because you guys might find something that, hey, we want to do something different, or hey, we're going to, I doubt it because we don't have any fields, but what it does do is, it does allow you guys a little bit more freedom and maneuverability in your, in a one-year contract, so you're not bound in. And it also has, for us, it's, it's reviewed every year, just how things look. So that's just kind of my thoughts on it. You know, I played against Duane and coached with him for a year, and I had less, I scrimmaged against you guys, little kids, we've all been there. Ernie's coach, Jess had kids and coached and played. We all know that. And that's, that's the cool thing about the program. And I mean, you start looking at all the kids that have come through and everybody who's done it, what's going on. But we still have to be mindful of the, of the taxpayers. And that's the biggest thing that we try and come back to.
Brian?
So the issue I see coming up with the shed, if you want to give it to the county and then we say we're going to sell it back, when we sell public property, if it's over $250, we're going to have to go to a public auction. So the right to first refusal would not work in this situation.
Well, the right of first refusal probably would.
Is to rent.
The transfer.
Or leasing.
Yeah. So there's, there's two, there's two things. If we did right of first refusal, that would mean that they, anytime they rented fields, they'd have the right to use it before anybody else.
Okay. I forgot about that. Or... You can lease it? Yeah.
Or, the other option is an and/or, the or would be, if they couldn't lease it, they had the ability to buy it back, which is, which creates the issue you're...
Yeah. And to lease, the commissioners, the unanimous, it all comes down to, if it's five years you're going to lease it.
See, and I don't, I don't mind on the shed and all that stuff. I don't, I don't mind having, and this is where I say, I don't mind necessarily having it a little bit longer if we're going to run into that issue. Well, it's a, it's a nice baby barn and it's a, it's there. Let's, let's face it, very quickly without proper maintenance and upkeep, and just sheds, they're going to drop in value fairly quickly. I mean, you'll still have some normal value, but normally, in the assessment side of the county, we normally only assess $1,000 to a shed once it's been there more than five years. I mean, that's, that's normally how we even look at it. So what I'm saying is, is I'd rather have a longer-term contract for the, the field then, if we can't do that, we'd have to go back to options, because it's something that's a, it's a point of contention and it's a point of something. But okay, if in this first initial one, it's a, we would say it is, instead of a one-year with a right to refusal of renting or leasing, do it at a two or three to make everybody to, hey, okay, we're going to, we're going to do this on this shed or whatever, if that's where it is, because then we don't have to go to a public auction. And that's what I'm saying, is if we can avoid that, and if we can go back, so if it's a better thing, if that's what you'd want, then if, I don't have a problem with going to a two-year or three-year on that, knowing that we would have to then go to a public auction to ever do anything to that shed.
Well, I think as long as the survivability clause is included, that basically outweighs the term of the agreement. So in terms of the first right of refusal, or even on the repurchase of the shed, I don't think the value of what it's sold at really matters, as long as we have that option to buy it back.
I think that, I imagine you have, you'd probably have to write a first refusal to be able to move forward.
With $250.
Not, yeah. It would, it would have to be that, that you do that, we'd have to have a depreciation schedule and look at and see where that shed would equal $0, which we could look at that and say, maybe 10 years from now, that shed might even be $0.
So let's just take, buy the shed back off the table and, and do the right of first refusal.
Are you guys going to rent it anytime?
I guess, what does that mean if, or doesn't allow us to use it after year one?
So you still always have the right of first refusal, so nobody else can rent it or use it unless you guys have the option first for you to say no.
But if you say we can't use the fields, then we would want to move the shed somewhere else.
Well, the shed wouldn't be here. And even the, and even the fields, and even the fields, I'm okay on, even on the fields, saying, all right, a first refusal to be the first ones to rent and use the fields.
Okay.
Because in the fall, we use it for football on that, and that's where we've done it, and we've worked out a deal where everybody's tend to be happy. The problem is, is we don't have enough sports fields in Bannock County for football, lacrosse, baseball, soccer, Quidditch, whatever else they're playing right now. The kids out there running around in the middle of the field, I saw them the other day, doing Pokemon Go out in the middle of the field, I was like, what are they doing? That's for good. So I'm okay with having a first right of refusal for that. I actually prefer, I don't prefer a one-year or a two-year, I actually prefer a two-year. That's kind of just what I like in the government scent, because you know, okay, we got this year coming up, and next year, we're going to be there, we're in negotiations next year, and that's where you go, and that's where you have it. A two-year is ten, you know, for me, just, I like that better.
So then, so then, so then that would be good, and then waive the fees for the two years would be basically exchange for the shed?
Well, and what you do is waive one year, two year.
What's going to happen to me?
You know, and that's, and you have a lot of fees, and you have a lot of stuff, and I get it. I, I, we got to be careful.
We just had, we just had BIE. We had people in there talking about the assessed values, we had people in here talking about their taxes, and, and I feel like, yeah, it's, it's a good organization, it's been here a long time, but you've also had a break for a long time in, in fees and costs and, and everything else. That shed's been there, you said, six years or plus. You haven't paid a dime for rent on that shed in the whole time it's been here.
Like I said, I don't have a problem with waiving the fees off this first year and working on something for, for the following year. And maybe your fees are negotiated every year, but the right of the use of the field is done by multiple years. I don't know how you, look at that. I don't have a problem with trying to figure out really how to have some stability here, because that's what you're talking about, is, because you have, if all of a sudden you said, right now, you are not going to play on that field next year, it would take you a while to scramble to figure out where to play all these football games. And so that's what I'm saying. I don't like having, I like a little bit of stability in there. I like the first, the right of first refusal, because it does show, if you're willing to be a partner with this organization, it's a partnership. It's not a, hey, we're just going to come use the field. It's, no, this is the partnership. We want to show a little bit of faith in making sure that you know that you're always, you're going to be the first ones then to be back. If you're good tenants, you're not driving on field, busting sprinklers, you know, doing shenanigans, then we want to have that. And that's, that's why I don't have a problem with having a two-year or that kind of thing now. And to go to Ernie's point, we had a thousand hearings. I was at the grocery store last night getting milk, and I got screamed at in the dairy section for 15 minutes by a dude that was mad about his taxes. That's an everyday thing. And as much as I love football, there's a point that a lot of people right now are pretty mad about what's happening, and, and I get that. So that's the benefit.
Well, that's why I asked for Scott and Mr. Crute to say, what is the actual value? It's $17,000 a year. That's what the actual value of just renting the fields are.
And we have a lot of fields, to tell you the truth. The biggest one that, that a lot of people, when they find out about, they get kind of mad, is we get a lot of people from out of state that want to come in and have some crazy camp, and they're, they'll pay, we've had people come in and we'll pay $6,000 for your fields for a weekend. However, that's not, while the money is nice, it's the benefit of what our youth are doing or what we're doing, so that's what I'm saying. So we have to have at least the base cost as much as we can. That's what we're trying to cover. That's what we're trying to get to, is, and what we have too, is we still have recapitalization efforts for what we're doing to improve those fields. And so as I was saying, we're just waiting the fields on us. Well, that's fine right now, but taxes don't cover recapitalization and a bunch of other stuff.
So can I, can I throw an offer on the table for you to consider?
Okay.
And I haven't talked to anybody about this subject, thrown some things out. So last year, I paid $3,000, so we talked about increasing it by 5%, and I included the 3%, and I tried to bump up every contract just to account for inflation, and 2% for the shipment, which I know is, is, turns out to be not a lot of money. But if we said that the contract for this year, 2022, would be $31,500, the contract for the year following would be $33,0750. Total of that contract, the two-year contract would add up to, and this is paying off the graduated schedule we paid last year, moving forward, would be $64,5750. If we assess the shed value lower at $5,000 instead of $8,000 that we originally talked about, and then minus that off of the two-year contract, that would be $1,400 for the two years, essentially, would be what the league would pay us. And then we get the shed, and then they get the clause moving forward, which essentially gives...
Right of first refusal.
Right of first refusal, but it also gives them the, the ability to kind of move forward with the fee, along the fee schedule that they had been receiving in the past. It also allows us to buy the shed at a reduced cost, less than they had originally purchased the shed for. I'm just trying to find some middle ground here. And the reality is, is we do have people that are intending to be there on Friday, and this is a work session. If we can come up with a workable solution that people would be okay with, that's all I'm throwing out, is just, but this is, this has taken some concession from the commission part to go to the fees that they paid last year, and some concession from the Youth Football League to drop the price of the shed from 8,000 to 3,000, or 5,000, I mean. We combine the two into a two-year contract with the right of first refusal, and the two-year contract would essentially be that, here are the fees for the next two years, minus the 5,000 for the shed, so here's what you owe us in fees over the two-year contract, which would be $1,400, $1,457.57.
So that's with the first right of refusal.
Then with the first right of refusal. So that's just an all-out, just throwing that out.
First order of use on the fields and also the shed.
One thing, too, on anything inside the shed, that we need to add in that clause, if the county's not responsible, just that.
For sure. And I was actually thinking that we could, there should be a waiver, a release of liability that we could fill.
Because that, that $100 million Bugatti that you guys have inside of that shed, we're not paying for that when it burns down. I'm sorry.
So I, I just want to throw that out. I don't know, that's not necessarily, and I'm not trying to go against what other people are saying, I'm just trying to throw an all-bench out, so.
Yeah, I would say in good faith. I would be fine with that, because I, again, I don't, we want to get this up, we want to get this up, and we got 8,000 people showing up Saturday, and so, but, you know, it's...
Not yet. Well, they're coming, they're going to play back today. Then it's trespassing.
I did want to mention that, just for consideration, so we, we're not a profit organization, and so every, any increase that we get here also is distributed to the players. And so, you know, we are one of the cheapest in the, in the area, and any fee that we increase here, we're going to have to distribute to them. And so, they're playing 150 now, and so just keep that in mind, and, and we support the whole county.
And I got about four years, and I'm going to be paying that fee, so I, I appreciate that, but you just talked about having many cash and everybody else coming into Bannock County, and Bannock County subsidizing everyone and kids from outside the county. If you're playing on this field for this price, you're going to be subsidized.
Economic impact, so is significant. And I shared a study from my Atto stage here two years ago, and it affected that our program has, in fact, outside of the pro rodeo that used to be, our, our, our program was one of the largest economic impact in the community.
So when you take those, when you take those dividers, and what you're, and what we're talking about, is when you start looking at the overall economic impact and the, and the amount of sales tax and everything on top, you have to assume that you're taking people's money and you're having those impacts. And that's great. A lot of our outside sport events will charge the outside teams a different rate to come in and play on the fields. That's, that's a very custom thing, and that's actually something I would probably look at, is if you're going to have teams coming in and you're not having a Jurassic, a huge amount difference, but there is that. The reason that I have, don't have a problem paying for the kids in this, in this league is because I have property taxes, and we have property taxes, so those players will pay for it. Once they go outside of Bannock County, those parents aren't paying property taxes, and that's why I don't have a problem having the Ohio States out there, because my property taxes, I'll pay for that. And I'm okay with that. I'm 100% okay with that. You come from Idaho Falls, you come from other places, yeah, you might be paying a fee, but are you actually paying, is there something that's been paid? And that's the question. So a lot of areas will actually, outside those teams, when you do that, there is actually an outside, and it's a very common thing, I was at, we were at IUC one year, and they had a guy that came and talked about that. If you have these kind of facilities, encouraged, that's the outside thing, because that's the main, of what their parents would have had if they would have been playing in our vein, you know, so.
Well, and that comes down to that, if you're going to bring 7,000 people in here, there's 7,000 people's worth of garbage and sewers and everything else that we end up, Bannock County ends up paying for.
There'll be a million-dollar project up there to fix some sewer stuff that's there. It's going to be this next year. And that's why we're saying, that facility is already 10 years old, and we're going to start having recapitalization efforts real quick up there to keep it to the, because if it gets nasty, and you've got gopher holes, and you've got broken up parking lots and horrible facilities, are you going to have those other entities wanting to come play here? And that's where we want to be, is with, that's where I'm going.
I actually know, but I'm not against it. I'm not against football, I've participated in it, my kids have participated in it, but my responsibility is for Bannock County. I have, I look at the, the invoices, I look, I go line by line. We just did that, and that's just part of my nature. And so, when I see something that I feel like, well, Bannock County's kind of been taken advantage of, in my opinion, you've got a very good price for a long time. We're going to end up paying for the cost of moving that shed? What if it doesn't move? What if it falls apart? I mean, it's our responsibility. I still like the one-year deal. Their likes two years, I like the one-year deal for the price of the shed, the right of first refusal. But honestly, we don't have anything before us to sign today. And we could give you a, a verbal to be able to use the facility this weekend, but, but we don't have an agreement right now.
And, and the reason we didn't bring in an agreement was because I want, I knew that there would have to be some negotiation here. I didn't want to bring something that wasn't ready to sign anyway. So, so essentially, I, whatever you guys agree to, we'll knock out an agreement and get it to you guys, and, and then if you guys give permission for them to use it on Friday, we'll have an agreement for you guys to sign first by next year.
Yeah. Well, yeah. I was going down the path you were with a two-year deal and, and put the shed in there. I struggled with it a little bit, with the right of first refusal on buying the shed back.
But you can't have it on the shed, on use and rent.
No, I, I get that. So I'm okay with the two-year deal. I don't like those, but in this case, I think I would, I would be willing to do that. And so, the two-year deal would be, if I understood your proposition correctly, would be we value the shed at 6,000.
With 5,000 on the shed?
Use it at 6.
So, I'm sorry, value the shed at 5,000, $6,400 would be the fees. So minus the 5,000 off of $6,457.50, and that would be $1,457.50 would be owed between the contract, over the contract.
Okay. I would be okay.
Sorry if I was, if I was not clear on that.
No, I was making notes, and so I might not have heard properly, so we're good. I'm okay with that, just at this point in time. I feel we have to decent compromise on both sides. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to accept the terms that Scott Crowder, the Bannock County Event Center Director, proposed, and with the authorization to allow Southeast Idaho Little League Football Association?
Youth Football League.
Youth Football League to allow, or them to use the football fields located with the Bannock County Bonnus Complex this following Friday.
Correct?
Saturday, Saturday.
I, I, from the amendment, maybe, I don't want to agree upon the contract right now, I want it in writing.
No, I wanted the terms, just the terms, and then I'll come back.
Okay, okay, okay. Just so that we're, we're not agreeing to a contract right now, we're saying, these are the terms we're looking at, that you will be able to use the facility this weekend.
Yep.
Okay. Because I want it in writing before...
Yep. No, and that's, and that's, I'm sorry.
Binding is set for...
We've been out of this for a week, so it's a little rusty.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Bring it back, and you can use the facility this weekend.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Again, that's...
Right here, right now.
Yeah, if we go.
Come up Saturday.
Oh, well, we'll be up there.
Do you want to hear my second amendment now, or you want me to wait? I can, I can back up.
Back up for a minute. All right. Chief O'Hern and there's Mr. Stuckey.
Mr. Chairman, we are with the Board of Ambulances.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now with the Board of Ambulances. All right, introduce yourselves.
Good morning Commissioners, Ryan O'Hara in Bannock County Analyst District.
Good morning Commissioners, Jason Stuckey, Vice Principal Athletic Director at Marsh Valley High School.
So, we're here before you, Mr. Stuckey has asked for ambulance standby, I believe at football and soccer games, is that correct? Throughout September and October and has also asked for a fee waiver for those events. And so, that's what we're here before you today to discuss.
So, do you have to have an ambulance there? Is it?
Strongly recommended by the IHSA.
Do you have to have an ambulance or do you just have to have a medical provider?
It is strongly recommended that we have the ambulance.
Okay, well.
Are you staffing that with volunteers or is that, hey, guys out of Pocatello?
So, one of the things that has become apparent over the last couple of years was just the frequency with which our volunteers in South County were getting asked to do standbys on, on these events. And it really came to our attention a year ago when we kind of tried to change course with how we manage these ambulance standbys. In the past, it's always just kind of been a phone call to the coordinator down there to say, hey, we need you this weekend. And as that number has increased and as our call volumes in South County have increased for nine-one-one service and the difficulties that we've been having with volunteerism and keeping the ambulances staffed and in service, we began to realize that this is becoming a bigger impact on our volunteers and that we can't just commit to the phone call and we'll be there on, on Friday night. We need to actually schedule it.
Legally, they cannot do that.
Understood.
I come before commissioners, we're the only ones that can waive fees. The only ones that can.
So, what do you do with, with the other schools? With Highland and Poki and Century and?
We do not do standbys for any other schools or any school districts. They either take care of it through possibly athletic trainers. Well, I know they have the trainers on site. They have the trainers that are there. Bingham, I think, is the one that's the provider right now that's there. And that was my question of why, to see that, because there's some of those entities that are very willing to have their name out to do that and that was just something I've seen with the other schools that have done that. And so, that was just, my first thought was to just, you know, not, because I know the burden, it's on the volunteers right now, what's going on. And if you have an actual athletic trainer down there, because there's some of the stuff that they'd probably be able to help some of those kids with, especially muscles, tears, strains, all that fun stuff that probably the EMTs are not doing.
They're not responding to that. The people that are responding to the injuries on the field are the athletic trainers. The ambulances are there primarily for the neck injuries and things like that. And the other school districts around us do have ambulances there. Preston has their ambulance from their hospital there. Snake River has the hospital out of Bingham there. All of them have ambulance on site.
I mean, you're the F, you're the one that really do feel comfortable.
And we haven't had it, had, excuse me, we haven't had it here in Pocatello because it's always been up at the Mini Dome, but there has been an ambulance there on the nights that they played in the Mini Dome in the past. So, this is the first year that I think we'll be doing varsity games in Pocatello, not in the Mini Dome. So, I'm not sure how School District Twenty-Five is approaching that. Have you talked to them about it?
I spoke with, I haven't spoken with the school district and we haven't received any requests for ambulance standbys from School District Twenty-Five.
We should probably have this, well, and like I said, we have four high schools that have football teams and soccer and we really just need to make sure whatever we're doing for, for one, we're fair with the others because, you know, you don't, you know, I really say I like Highland more because I went there and, you know, but then I get yelled at by my wife who went to Marsh Valley, so, you know.
For player safety, I think it's critical that we have an ambulance on site. But having said that, with the volunteers, I don't have a problem waiving fees because it's not as expensive, but when we start waiving fees for the Chief O'Hern staff, that's a different story because that's an expensive way.
So, are they paying the volunteers by their own standby?
So, I think in the past we have.
They get paid if they give it a call.
But they don't get paid.
On their standby.
I, I would, I think that if we're going to ask them to do that, it would be fair to compensate them as if we count, we credit them a call, you know, and I believe it's twenty-five or twelve dollars an hour. I might be mixing up whether that's, whether they transport or not, but I would propose that we should give them some fee, some sort of compensation within the rules of the FLSA that would be appropriate to maintain their volunteer status, but also compensate them for their time.
And then my second question would be, so they have to deliver somebody to the hospital. Does the ballgame quit? Do they stop?
No, but the ballgame ceases until that player is removed from the field, so if we don't have an ambulance on site and.
You have to wait for an ambulance to arrive.
That's thirty to forty minutes before the ambulance gets there. Then we got, especially if it's a neck injury, those take forever to get taken care of. Hate to sound crass or harsh, but it does take forever to get those players off the field.
South County would probably, you know, and again, in Pocatello, you're more like, I mean, you have, you got an ambulance at the, at the Pocatello Creek one for Highland, which literally can be there in two minutes. There's an ambulance station that's literally just down the road from Poki High School that can be there in.
Same for Century.
Century. It's a little bit further, but still, it's, it's, I mean, you're, you're not going to be there.
Anytime you call an ambulance, it's a minimum thirty minutes away.
Generally, what we do when we have the ambulances doing standby at events is that ambulance, particularly when they've been requested and paid for by the event, that ambulance is dedicated to that event and they don't do the transport. They would stabilize the patient initially and we would call, in the case of South County, either, either Downey ambulance that should be in service for nine-one-one service or an ambulance from North County or possibly even live flight.
Yeah, land the car on the field.
And, and transport the patient, but if, if an ambulance has been requested and authorized for an event, they generally do not do the transport.
So, what ambulance would be set here in Marsh Valley?
It probably would be a second ambulance potentially staffed by volunteers with Downey. The other option is Downey personnel are, are welcome to stage their ambulance at the Marsh Valley event, provided that they're in service for nine-one-one events in South County. You know, that way they'd have a decreased response time to Marsh Valley, but if there was a, an event up Marsh Creek or something like that, our, our first obligation is to the nine-one-one service. And so, that's the only thing here is that we're, we're worried about over committing to the events and having it impact the nine-one-one service.
Five home football rooms and then present world soccer?
Yeah.
So, how many soccer do we need?
I think we had fifteen events throughout the fall. It's about forty hours of standby.
Like I said, the one thing I'm kind of, I'm kind of fretting on and this should be for all schools is if there's any hard cost that is an actual, you know, field cost, you know, what do they actually have to have? I have, that, those are things that need to be paid, but like the soft cost of like the normal, some of those wages, if we can get, or waive them those, I'm okay with, I'm okay with that, but some of those hard costs of, you know, because I know that like generally we have like a lot of one-hundred-and-fifteen-hour flat rate is that.
Yeah, our, our flat rate right now and we haven't adjusted it. We probably should have brought a fee resolution this year to come up with a better fee structure for South County based on how we're going to staff. Currently, our fee structure is a hundred and seventy dollars for an ambulance. We do have a fee for a ninety-dollar single provider if we just send a single paramedic or an EMT. So, we could potentially charge a single provider rate or something like that.
I mean, I, I, like I said, I don't have a problem with helping out or we can help out, but at the same time, we do need to cover some of those hard costs. And that needs to be for all, any of those other high schools, sports, anybody who comes to the phone does that, but it's just, hey, whatever the rate is that we're going to, whatever we're charging for the sporting events, that's the rate for all the schools across the county, so it's not, you know.
I'm, I'm almost wondering if we don't table this, sorry, but if we table it and give you a chance to reach out to District Twenty-Five so we can.
I mean, that's just what I'm saying, is this.
You've got one coming up August twenty-ninth, it looks like. Do you have four days left?
I don't have a problem with them sending down an ambulance. Other than if we have to waive a fee on the first one, we take that.
Half the first one is covered.
Be okay with that as well. Just, again, for consistency across the district, if School District Twenty-Five is going to use it, we should charge them or do the same thing for them that we're doing for Marsh Valley.
And that's just one of the things that I've said. I don't have a problem with us figuring this out if we, if we have to work it out or we go that way.
Does a week give you enough time? Yeah, and, uh, in speaking with Robin Nielsen, that's the coordinator in South County, he thought that they could potentially do the football games, but over the years, as there's been more requests for soccer, it is becoming more of an impact.
For soccer, I mean, because you're really worried about them, if I'm getting this right, you're worried about head neck injuries, is your main. I mean, I don't know if I've seen a lot of head neck injuries. I've seen a lot of broken nasty legs in soccer, but not necessarily, I mean.
I can't speak to soccer.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I used to watch all my buddy, my buddy that played for Highland, I mean.
Maybe an Achilles tear.
Achilles tear. I mean, I've seen some nasty compound fractures, but I've never really seen a lot of like, that, I mean, do you need the full response of the ambulance?
If I can speak to that really quick, one of the things is Title IX is pretty picky about don't favor one sport versus another and so, it's just an effort to say, if I've asked for football and I asked for soccer.
Well, but if you're not asking for men's soccer or, so Title IX is specifically for gender equality and so, if you're asking for men's soccer and not for girls' soccer, that's the problem.
They play together.
Well, but, but football is a different risk assessment of it. So, if football, I can understand where you said, hey, we need an ambulance because your risk assessment is saying we're going to have guys crashing together and breaking our necks. For soccer, whatever the level of service is, yes, it needs to be for both men's and women's soccer. I, I mean, that's, yeah, understood. But that's what I'm saying is for one sport to not, I'm not talking about anything with gender. I'm not talking about anything would be a Title IX requirement. I'm talking specifically, one sport has a different risk assessment. Now, like baseball, I'd be more worried about kids sitting there stalling sunflower seeds and, you know, it's a different risk assessment. You need a, a full ambulance for a baseball game as opposed to like a football game. And the same in soccer. I mean, are you going to, do you need the full ambulance transportation or do you need medical personnel on site? And that's just what I'm saying is, is because that's a costing thing of, you heard what he said, a single medical provider is ninety an hour versus a hundred and seventy an hour for an ambulance. And that's just where, I'm trying to think of the taxpayers here, but then also the limited amount of resources.
So, speaking for what the past has been, Robin has said this has been parents that want to be at the game. Our expectations was nothing beyond those parents that were like, hey, I can bring the ambulance up and we can help you out. We're, we have no expectations because we don't want to cost the taxpayers and we don't have the funds right now to be affording.
Right, but the problem is the volunteerism, as Chief O'Hern has alluded to, is, is becoming an issue right now, especially in South County.
Well, and again, we have to, they're all good to HR. Not paying people when they're on duty. Yeah.
Yeah, it's waiting to be engaged or engaged wait, so.
Yeah, well, no discussion about that, that counts. When they're on call, what's going on?
If they're out.
If they're obligated.
If they're out, then it's a.
And they're less out.
The volunteers that are out.
Volunteers are different. Volunteers are, yet they're volunteering outside of their.
Well, but they're in their capacity though. This is the problem is they're volunteering for a capacity where there's no. Well, they're, 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 so it's, again, it's a weird, we're wandering into this weird, they are there and while they might be volunteering, but they're there, they're not there representing themselves, they're there representing the Bannock County ambulance. And that's the problem is they are there in a capacity that if they went and treated somebody while they were standing there and they did something wrong, the liability comes back to the organization, not to the individual.
And what if the other day they have to say, I'm not going to go, you know, and they get, we're committed to that.
I don't know, I don't know.
All that stuff is one of them.
And this is why, this is why the worm's nest of, of what this is, is, and I agree with Jeff, but if, if Jeff, especially in his experience of, how many games have you officiated? Several thousand probably. If Jeff's saying we should probably have an ambulance there, then we look at it to, okay, we have some sporting events and and while we also are responsible for nine-one-one directly, if we know there is a high-risk event occurring in our community, it's usually what do we do to mitigate that risk for the event to take place? If it makes sense that, hey, we're going to have a bunch of kids slamming against each other and we probably, that's going to be.
That was a rock concert.
That's a rock concert?
That is a rock.
But still, that's, that's still, we should probably talk about that.
That could be prompt too.
That'd be prompt.
So, look, I'm, I'm going to reject that now. I'd like to give you approval to have, go down and, and waive the fees for the first game. And then let's table the conversation more and, because like I said, there's, there's a lot more to it. It comes back to this, just like we said with the Little League football. We have people in the county that are paying their taxes and I know you guys say you don't have money. We don't have money. We don't have money as a county just to start paying people's wages or running ambulances without covering them. And, and so, it's a discussion that we got to have.
If you do the simple math of the hundred and fifty bucks an hour, that works out to about a little over six thousand dollars per year. And then you multiply that by four schools, now we're, now we're into the thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollar range that we're being asked to waive, which that's a big number, so that's why if we can table it.
And then the discussion is, well, but then we also have, that's just varsity. Are we having it at JV games? Because I don't know if Marsh Valley has JV soccer.
There are some JV games.
And so, then you have JV and then are we going to, and then you really want to start talking about, okay, you know, and so, I'm okay with it for this.
And I'll tell you, in my opinion, as a soccer player for my entire life, still five weeks ago, um, are you going to ask for an ambulance for basketball games?
Right now, they've not asked me to ask for basketball.
Baseball?
Baseball. See, I have, I have literally played in thousands of soccer games, in hundreds of soccer tournaments all over the country in my life and the only time I have ever seen an ambulance on the field, and granted, I mean, I graduated high school twenty-five years ago, but even still, the soccer tournaments that I go to with my kids and the games, the only time I see an ambulance on the field is when there are hundreds of teams there for a tournament. So, the, the weekly games, uh, I, I've never seen an ambulance. And I know that things change, but that's, that's my perspective is, um, is soccer injuries probably happen very similarly to basketball. So, if there's not going to be an ambulance there for basketball, then I don't think that there needs to be one for soccer and I'm a rough player.
Says the guy with the Achilles tear who plays soccer.
So, that's.
If you're okay with that, Chief. Well, I just would like to get some clarity. So, uh, in the event that, that we ask our South County personnel to stand by at one of these events and they're not able to fill that and maintain the nine-one-one service in South County, what's your, your hierarchy that you would like me to maintain there?
You're the expert and I'd like you to come back with a recommendation, honestly.
Okay.
When I speak for the high school, we prefer him to always put whatever their needs are first. Our, we're purely asking this as, these parents just want to hang out at the game. If you're here, great. If not, we get our athletic trainer. We're doing what we can. If we have to call nine-one-one, we'll do what we have to do.
Yeah, if, if we have volunteers that want to watch the game and hang out, be there and stage the ambulance there and do that, that's great.
I think that's kind of what they've done.
I, I don't have a problem with that, but when we're starting to, then the degradation of service, that's the main thing, but we have them guidelines for that. Because this is going to be an interesting conversation though, because I can almost guarantee you in like, when's the first football game?
Friday.
Friday. So, if it's Friday, we're going to get a phone call from School District Twenty-Five and they're going to be freaking out because this is the first time they're all playing at their home fields and they're not playing in the Hult Arena and they're all going to freak out because they don't have ambulances laid on and they're going to need one.
So, but even if they want to stage it there and stuff, I still think that they need to have contact with you and make sure that.
Yeah.
The ambulance district knows what's going on, where ambulances are. I mean.
Yeah.
That's, it's not their ambulance. Their volunteer that runs the county ambulance.
Understood. Yeah, I think we can have a discussion with them and attempt to staff this to help you guys out and also allow them to be engaged in the communities. I, that's part of why they volunteer on the ambulance is to participate in.
And this falls, and we're just lead us, trying to get an ambulance in the camp and, and house it down there and stuff. I mean, it's, it shows the need. And, and so.
So, if we're good with that. Yeah, and I'll report back if we have any hiccups. Mr. Stuckey and I'll stay in contact and we'll make sure that we're trying to foresee problems and report back to you.
Yeah, in my years of going down there, I don't think I've seen the ambulance leave to go somewhere else. I don't know if I ever have, so odds are that it won't, but I apologize that we have to have a bigger conversation than just this one, but I, I appreciate that, so.
We appreciate you doing what's fair for everyone.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we exit the ambulance district.
Make a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm going to excuse myself. I have another engagement I need to be at.
All right. Thank you. Okay, who do we have? What do we have? Scott, go ahead and come back up. Before we get into that, we, oh, this isn't with you, this is with law enforcement. It's with Little League football. Brian hadn't looked at this and had some concerns and crossed them out and stuff.
So. Just the indemnification clause and.
Crossed out here.
I talked to the sheriff yesterday too.
And we talked to him about it, so.
And he said he was going to speak with them.
Okay.
That was just really the main issue would be indemnification.
So, if, if we sign it, then it's up to them to accept the changes?
Right.
It would essentially be a camera roll.
And Brian hadn't.
With his own.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let Brian go through and, and make sure that it's good. I'll give that to you.
Thank you.
And I apologize. That was you left before we got into that and I, I noticed that, that he needed to sign that and I forgot about it as we was going through, so. All right, Scott, you're up.
I am. So, uh, what I have before you is, um, a few hours of putting together some numbers, some projections, about what running concerts really looks like for us and then kind of a plan moving forward. I've, I've taken this and I've kind of, you know, put it out over ten years and there's, there's a lot of factors that, that we'll look at, um, the costs and. And then, and then the benefits, the return on investment, all that stuff that goes into.
Make sure that we're good before we send it on. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. That goes into running a concert, so this is just essentially a, a breakdown of the, the initial two million dollar investment and then where that money would go and what it would look like to run events for year, projected income from those events. And these are, these are some, there's some hypothetical numbers in here because, um, like, we may go out and buy a concert for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we may buy a concert for twenty thousand dollars. Um, those, those things are kind of unknown, but I did just kind of pool them into certain, um, certain areas and so, um, if you want, we can kind of go through, uh, just the, the cost breakdown of how the money would be spent. Um, so initially we had talked a little bit about her, initially I should say, my idea was to try to buy the backend, the production equipment for, uh, the venue, to buy everything, speakers, sound, soundboards, all that stuff. And the more people I talked to, the, the quotes I got started to range from, like, you could do something that would be okay to, like, don't even mess around with it. Um, and some of the, the equipment that, that bands bring with them offsets some of the equipment that we have here, uh, that we would have here potentially and then, like, if you bought one soundboard that would, that everybody would wanna use, it's like two hundred plus thousand dollars, but more often than not, people aren't gonna have a specific soundboard that they want and so you, you're gonna end up leasing soundboards, depending on the show regardless. So, it kinda changed, uh, the, the direction that I went, I talked to a couple of production companies, uh, to get the best way to invest their money. Um, there are some things that pretty much everybody needs, like they need the trusses that you see hanging up in the venue that the lights hang on. Uh, they need some of the, the motors that, that raise and lower speakers or raise and lower those trusses, um, a, a pretty good, a safe bet is a lighting package, you know, just a general lighting package that we could run if we needed to, we have a staff member that's trained on lighting, that could actually reduce some of our production costs. Um, and then maybe a little bit of sound equipment to bolster, like, the stuff that we have for the movies in the park. Um, and in doing that, I also threw in the cost for a small stage setup, um, that is, like, the stage setup we used for the Fourth of July and the stage setup that they use for the Downy Fair, the lighting and the sound would also be able to attach to that, so we'd be able to provide those services for ourselves if we needed to for future events, along with things like, uh, forklifts or scissor lift. Um, there's, there's equipment that I'm learning about every single day, right? So, uh, things I learned this last week is we need metal detecting ones, right? And, and to be honest with you, don't live with the security to bring that stuff with them, as they, they cost a, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars apiece, we might as well have some of those on duty that we could just throw manual batteries in and deploy as the concert needs arise, barricades, the same, et cetera. So, that would be the five hundred thousand dollars, we incorporate all of those things we just talked about. And now, this is not an official bid, these are just talks, quotes, uh, discussions I've had with people and I feel like that's a pretty fair, uh, pretty fair number to, to get us where we're on with all those items. And that's, those are one-time costs. Now, obviously there's a, there's a life of those products, some of those things may have to, um, be replaced, but I feel like a lot of these things are gonna be long-lasting, ten, fifteen, twenty, or, uh, items. So, the next one we get into is really the, uh, the yearly cost that we'd want to generate enough revenue to pay for these costs. And the, the first page is staffing and, uh, I've talked to a few different people about staff members, uh, you know, some of the, the staffing pieces I had initially wanted to deal with, like a food and beverage manager, a security, a production manager slash electrician, and then somebody that could assist, you know, as with production. But if we end up contracting for production services, which it sounds like that's the, the safest route to go, at least initially, so in my initial plannings, this is a year one snapshot, we would contract production services. So, we'd work with a production company, they'd bring in, uh, the majority of the stuff, minus that where we have and minus that any services that we could provide, um, and then they'd provide those things. But, so, I took out the production manager piece. Um, I would love to hire an electrician because we have a lot of electrical needs. The fact is, is the market right now is so great for electricians that finding one at the rate that we were paying does not quite add up. And so, I, I actually just threw electrical services in another, another area. Um, and I estimated some electrical costs, but again, it's kind of a, a little bit of a guess, we just don't know until we get a bid and then when we see what we have going on. Um, and so, the, the three things that we're seeing here is, one, we have the food and beverage, uh, who is an event coordinator, it's a food and beverage manager. And then the second thing is an event manager that's one level higher. Uh, one thing I found during the last show that we, um, that, that we have at our venue, um, as I walked around and watched, uh, how things kind of unfolded and some of the chaos that ensued in that event or just the, just the, the stuff that was going on, I, I feel that I need somebody that has, uh, that is my backup, right? Um, that can help me to manage those events during the time of events. It can get really, really hectic and then, I'm gonna, this is gonna shock you, but there's gonna be times I want a day off, you know, and I'm sure there's gonna be a concert, I've gotta have somebody that could step up in that role. And I have a fantastic staff, but quite frankly, this is gonna be a specialized role, right? And so, I need to have somebody that can, that can be there to help us manage that. Um, I, I have, you know, pretty distinct roles and responsibilities and this year, I know as we, you know, as we've kinda discussed before, some of the positions would have a role in the event side and in the, uh, concert side and so we could possibly split, um, the way we paid for those people. Um, but this first year, we'll run everything out of here. Uh, the reality with this is the event manager, you guys know we have a lot of events that happen at our facility and we're getting more and more every day. And so, having somebody that could help on the administrative side of some of those events would be a huge benefit to us, um, maybe even going out and trying to help, um, recruit, bring in new events. Um, and then obviously the food and beverage coordinator, they're gonna be doing concert stuff, but they're also gonna be doing just as much in the grandstands and the, the lower areas. So, so that position also, both these, what I'm saying, these two positions are going to be out and about in the, the event center side as well as the wellness complex side. So, at some point, we just need to maybe have a discussion, maybe next fiscal year, we'd have a good idea of what that percentage looks like to maybe balance that out a little bit.
But if they're handling events, the whole point of that proprietary fund was events.
Yeah, and, and as long as we're.
So, we could just leave them here, anyway.
Could if we put some of the revenue they generate from those other events into it too. Because right now, the revenue is only coming from concerts, so if we said.
And concessions.
And concessions, but if I said that the revenue that comes from high school rodeo goes into that, or the revenue that comes from, you know what I mean?
Because those would be the events.
Yes, so if, if some of those.
County wins.
Yeah, if some of those event revenues came in here, it would just offset the costs and I, and I'm okay with that, I just know that, as you'll notice, we have tight margins.
Yeah, as we, as we build this and talk a little bit more on how that proprietary fund's gonna function.
Uh-huh.
Um, we can look at what revenues will go where.
That's perfect.
Right now, I haven't built revenues to go into here, but we have built revenues to go into the event center budget. We can work on projections and see what we can put where.
That'd be awesome.
And then that would help this fund as well.
So, this is a one-year.
This essentially is, is kind of a snapshot for one year, but really it's, it's a projection for.
And what I was looking at was production.
Yeah.
And you got production on the next page.
Yes.
At a hundred and forty thousand.
Yes.
But are you gonna eventually need to move that production to a production manager? Is that?
No, that hundred and thirty thousand is if we contract for production. It, the, the thing is, is that's all the equipment, that's all, and the person to run the boards. So, that's what it costs to run, um, and again, this is from talking to a few different companies and kind of putting together some numbers. This would be something we'd have to put out the bid and, and have them come back and give us.
It would be the production manager.
Yeah, it would be the production manager.
Manager, but if eventually we took that over, it'd switch.
Yeah.
I'm just looking.
Yeah, and, and.
Taking positions away and adding in different areas.
But this could give us an idea if we want to have that as an employee or if we're better off having it as contracted.
And, and employee would be, the employee would, would save us some money for sure. The, the word that I'm talking to, or the word I'm hearing is, so I've talked to a couple of different, uh, facilities that are in our, uh, similar situation with us. I've talked to, like, the Sandy Amphitheater, um, and they're doing things differently, but they, the guy is like, look, we've tried it this way and we've tried it this way, this works best for this and this works best for this. Like, any equipment that we buy, we have to maintain in store, right? And so, it, it's a good idea if we have a good, clean storage place to, to keep things. And then.
Hey, we're done.
I get it, I get it, but that's training. Um, anyway, like, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to that at all because that's, that's probably the biggest, one of the biggest fees we're gonna have. These fees could drastically change over the coming years as we learn. I, I feel like we're gonna be paying a little bit of a stupid tax this year because we just don't know what we don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I, but I feel like we have a really good plan moving forward. Um, one fee that we'll see in there is the concert buyer fee. Um, so we had talked with, uh, another venue about partnering to do, that, to do a leg where we run a couple of legs for concerts. Um, the concert buyer fee is usually between fifteen to twenty percent. Um, they've offered a ten percent, uh, bid on that, now we have to, I had, I don't have a contract for that by this very second, um, but, uh, it sounds like it's a, it's a pretty fair deal. Um, part of the, the trainee, so, the, the labor you saw was training, I threw in like a twenty thousand dollar earmark for training. Uh, the first thing that they told me is you gotta get down to this conference in October, that's where you're gonna start being able to present your venue to potential concerts, potential, uh, concert buyers. You gotta meet people and start getting in the, in the industry. So, anyway, I, 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 I guess this, the whole projection could change year two, um, but this is a pretty good snapshot for year one.
Is that the same one that the, uh, fair staff attends or is that something different? Is this like at Austin or?
No, this one's in, in Nashville.
Okay.
He gave me the.
I was just thinking twenty grand is probably a little high.
But when the fair board goes to, is sponsoring, is, is fairs themselves.
So, so the, the reason I kept that, I put that, and again, I just threw that in there and now it's a little bit high, is because we probably wanna take, like, if, if the, the events manager and me to that conference and then there may be additional places we have to go to learn.
I have no problem with training.
Yeah.
It's under training. I mean, so, it's not just conferences, it's training.
But it goes back to these being, these over inflating costs and under inflating revenues, which is the way we like to do things.
So.
No, no, we have no money.
So, so I, I have had to bring those together a little bit more to, to just get our projections down. These are a little bit closer to real costs than I'd love to be, just so you know, I, I really tried to get as pared down as I could, but we still are over inflating and, and, and trying to underestimate. Um, so, everything on here is, again, based off of conversations I've had with people in that specific field. Uh, today, I'm meeting with a security company, um, I'll have a better idea of what that cost can be, um, and so I think that we'll be able to move forward. Um, as far as food and beverage, um, the, if we estimate, our goal for our concerts right now will be to get, uh, twenty dollars per person, uh, food, you know, through the food and beverage line, um, and that would, that, if I calculate how many people I expect to see at the show and then times that by twenty dollars per person and then I back off roughly one-third, um, for hard costs, that's where I come up with this number. So, um, now, places that perform well in the industry, bring in about thirty, between thirty and fifty dollars per person, uh, we have been sitting at sixteen dollars per person this year for concerts, for our food and beverage. I think that there are ways for us to bump that up. So, that's gonna be one of the areas that I specifically task our food and beverage manager with, increasing the customer experience and being.
Call the menu.
What's that?
Better menu.
Better menu. Um, so then the entertainment costs, you can see that I kinda just threw in a, a few variable, um, concerts, uh, at least prices on, on concerts, a, a couple of concerts where we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar buy-in, some concerts where we have an eighty-five thousand dollar buy-in. Our goal is to do between eight to ten concerts, um, but we know we have gotta prove ourselves to the people of our community in the surrounding area that we have the ability to hold a show of a decent size effectively. So, our, our goal next year is to kick off with a, a good show and then do it right, in, in my opinion, like, what I consider do it right. And that is getting, uh, people into the venue well before the show actually starts. So, that's, that's my goal, but you'll see there are some, some different shows. Now, the reality of this may be that we get a couple forty thousand dollar shows in this and then we also get some shows that cost more, but, uh, that's just for the, for the sake of numbers, that's what I rounded out, uh, hundred fifty thousand dollar shows or eighty-five thousand dollar shows.
And you're thinking forty dollars for your ticket sales?
That's, that's my, uh, average on those is forty dollars on the ticket sales.
I think that's what the casino is, they're lowest.
So, some shows that you have bigger buys, the tickets increase. Um, I know that it was a, uh, a potential act that, that we're trying to look at for next year, uh, that has that hundred and fifty thousand dollar buy and their tickets, as I've kinda looked at them, range from fifty dollars down. So, I think keeping people in that forty dollar price point would be, is, is a wise move. Now, if we bring in somebody that's, that hasn't been heard of before and is new, we may lower that price to try to get, you know, a few more people in the facility and then make that money up at the, on the backend.
So, I'm looking at your projected revenue and so if you say total sales of a hundred and ninety thousand divided by forty, that's you estimating selling forty-seven hundred tickets.
Yes.
Okay.
And then you'll notice that the food reflects that, so on forty-seven hundred tickets. So, our venue can hold eight to ten thousand, right? Um, we did a couple of shows last year where we were in a forty-five hundred range, uh, we just had one that sold seven thousand tickets. I know that the area can support shows of that magnitude, um, we've gotta, we've gotta represent the area that we can support shows of that magnitude. And I think once people see that we can do that, we'll get, people will come, they wanna see the, the people that we have that, that we're bringing, so. Um, I did add in some sponsorship for the Fourth of July, because we added the Fourth of July into this, uh, I threw the sponsorship in there to, to kinda count it out. So, that is my, my cost, you know, kinda my cost breakdown.
Okay. Kind of little questions on it.
Okay.
Maintenance of the venue. That isn't in here.
So, maintenance of venue would come out of the operations of the, the budget, the work.
So, we're separating the maintenance end of it from, okay, that's.
This would just be the actual events.
Events themselves. No, okay, fine.
Um, we'll have to tweak this obviously next year because of the timeframe of implementation and the unknown.
Well, and I guess that, that was part of my other question is, is we know that the entrance and exit of the venue is not where it should be and that's why I'm asking about the opera, or the maintenance and the operations of it that way to be included somewhere in the planning.
So, some of those things, I've gotta, um, so if their, if their facility costs, things that are gonna be added to or changed to modify the facility, I'd prefer them to, to come out of this, but, and, and I can look at, the way that I have my, the numbers set is it's about one point two million dollars for run year one, right? Now, now year one, it's kinda where year one costs a little bit more than every other year because we're buying talent for year one and buying talent, half of talent for year two, right? And so, we're, we're only bringing in the revenues on year one for half of the, the talent that we bought for year one. So, year one costs a little more money, but if we look at one point two million for the year one, five hundred thousand for hard costs and for hard costs, or for the things that upgrades, that's where I'm gonna look to try to squeeze in if we need to modify things lines, I'll see if we can't do it within that, within that budget.
So, quick question. Uh, on your ticket sales for the hundred and five thousand, you're not projecting forty-seven hundred ticket sales on those. What are you projecting on that?
So, I, I, what I'm, as I, I took the, the total number of the, so the twenty thousand dollar artist split, so that takes forty thousand dollars above the buy, divide that by forty and that gives you the ticket sales number.
So, the one twenty, so it should be one twenty-five?
No, it's one twen- or, so if we're doing eighty-five, you're right, it should be higher, it should be one twenty-five. It should be one twenty-five.
So, that gives you a three thousand ticket sales.
Yes. So, that's kinda the, the, just the way I did my, my math is I took that, the artist split and then our take on it. Yeah, artist split and our take on it, my, divided that out by forty dollars a ticket and then I, uh.
So, then. So then you...
Fee all the concessions.
Okay. So your one oh five should actually be one twenty-five?
One twenty-five, yes.
Okay.
Which will definitely change costs, or the projected...
So are you, are you trying to just estimate your tickets at the forty-seven, fifty total sold, or are you thinking you're gonna be like, on those lesser shows, it's more like three thousand tickets or twenty-five hundred tickets?
Probably gonna be fewer tickets sold on the cheaper shows. But the other thing is, is it's just not super exact, it's not exact science.
Right, I understand that.
So I'm trying to give a guess, you could like, I know...
That would be three thousand, thirty-one hundred tickets sold.
Yes.
Okay.
So, and then the other thing is, is the multiplier is also in there in the concessions. So if my math, well, it looks like my math's wrong, the total sales, my math, it would change on the concession stake too.
But you're using the twenty dollars as your consistent concession?
Yes, yes. So the, I can just give you some numbers, like I know there was a concert that was just bought up in the Boise area. I think that they paid maybe twenty thousand dollars for the artist, and they sold five thousand tickets at forty dollars a ticket, and then brought in roughly thirty-five to forty dollars per head in concessions. So we could have those shows, we also could have the shows where we pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then we only sell a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in ticket sales. And I guess if you could predict with super accuracy, we, I'd be a millionaire because I'd just be doing that all the time.
So how's the box seats figured in in that?
Box seats don't count towards your ticket sales, they're packaged, they're prepackaged sold, but they do add up in your concessions. So you, and I haven't added into this sponsorship or the box seats, because we've gotta figure out some of those values. And I know that this next year, sponsorship and box seats might be a little bit different because of the, because of the value people have this year.
Is this in Excel? Are you using formulas?
I am. I'm fixing it.
Okay.
And the numbers are looking better now that you have some formulas in there doing some stuff, just so you...
Please shut up.
So I had some formulas in there to defend myself on the other, I did have some formulas in there. Apparently, I'm not that cool with Excel spreadsheets. There are very cool people with Excel spreadsheets. Apparently, there's fast ways to do things, and I was doing the hard one, but I'm not saying I feel, I'm not. I thought it was a pretty good book, but it wasn't.
That was not meant to be.
So...
YouTube's got it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. So this is kind of a lot of the money. Now, things that I guess I would need permission to do, and I'd need permission to engage in contracts on behalf of the county for this amount, so, because you guys know that the contracts move really fast with concert stuff.
Just for the concerts, not for all the other stuff.
No, just for the concerts. Everything else I would just run through. It would just, it would just have to be for the concert stuff.
And I, we already talked about it. If we're gonna go this road, we gotta do it. I mean, you gotta be able to say, yes, we want that band or this, whatever, and we have to do it at your speed, not county's speed. That's what I feel.
I agree, and I wonder if just procedurally, if you can come in and, you know, you can do the verbal or sign the tentative offer sheet or whatever to get that going, and then you come in and we ratify it, just so we have some kinda tracking, what's, there's probably some, there's probably some...
So we will have, there will be an offer sheet that we have to sign, obligates money, and then they'll send us a contract that has all the fine details, and the contract will, I mean, I think the offer sheet is where we need speed, right? The offer sheet's where we need speed, I think the contract could be brought in. And I know the terms of those contracts are obviously not necessarily always open for public...
Right, that's why I was...
That's the only thing I just don't know a hundred percent about proceeding with that, but. And I am waiting a contract right now with the concert buyer, because I know that they wanna, they have a lead on a really good show for next year, but I have not seen it yet. I was hoping to have it today, that would allow us to, essentially for the ten percent of the concert buy, but I don't have that here today. And the only problem with that contract is, is we don't know how much we're gonna initially be paying in concert fees yet either, so...
So on this, we'll have to set up the enterprise fund this year, which I can do, but then we can roll over next year where we have it set for two million, assuming that you approve the budget next week. We could set up the two million this year and then only give the authority of what's left next year, and we could reduce that after the fact. For looking at these numbers, total costs are a million nine twenty-eight, five hundred thousand in equipment, that's over your two million allotment, so you're only gonna spend up to the two million until you start getting money in. Is that what you're thinking?
So the funds in this thing are gonna be, what's interesting is that the funds are just gonna be rolling all the time, right? So for the first six months until probably May of next year, June of next year, we're gonna just be kinda rolling some funds over, and then we're gonna start getting funds in as we roll funds. And so we should never exceed, even with all this stuff, we should never exceed that. As a matter of fact, we should actually have a chunk, you know, three hundred thousand dollars roughly sitting kind of in...
So the ten is to stay within the two million?
Yes, the ten is to stay within the two million and never go, never go above that, obviously.
Well, you have to. We have a different discussion. I mean, that, we don't have authority to spend up to a million dollars.
Right, okay.
No, this is just the, and again, there are a lot of, this is estimation to the best of my ability. My hope is then to go out and to negotiate and get the best deals within the parameters that we have.
So to give you authority to go out and sign right now, what do we need to do?
We're still researching the procurement laws on this as well, so I would say, like, we can give them the authority, but I would prefer that before anything happens. I know Shanna's looking into some things at ICU because they do it, I'm looking into it to make sure under procurement bidding laws, there's nothing that kicks in, but before anything's signed or agreed to, we just, we're gonna try to get that done this weekend, researching right now on it.
You got an hour.
Anything that comes up.
You got an hour.
An hour?
Yeah.
Because it's something we haven't done before, right? We haven't, here, and we're expanding funds, waiting for...
We did it with two concerts.
Right, okay.
I think I owe you...
ICCU. So I'm just...
Make one hot...
No, I'm sure we did do... I'm sure we did. I'm just saying, before like, before you go and do that, let me know. I'm gonna do it right now. I'm gonna do it today.
To assign authority for Scott to enter into contracts, do we need a formal reservation or just a signed memo?
It can just be a motion, yeah, because, I mean, that's under, that's under the powers of the commissioner, they can assign a county employee power to enter.
Can we have some...
Doesn't have to be a resolution.
But can we have some sort of paper trail, so at least a signed memo, so that future commission knows that this has been approved, and in order to take it back, they would, I mean, just to, just to know?
Yeah, if the commission wanted to, that's fine as well. I'm just saying legally...
A memo's fine, I mean, it's just something signed. I don't think it's a resolution.
If we sign it in a minute, does that satisfy what you're thinking?
I just want a paper...
When Nancy's...
Tell her we're doing it.
Especially my lawyers are willing to do it. Easily.
Because motions sometimes get buried and lost, but if there's some sort of paper trail, I'm not trying to make it hard by any means, but I'm also trying to protect you for, say, next year, if we never have one new commissioner, and so in order for them to know what's going on, it would be a, just something procedurally.
I'm okay with that. So, Mr. Chair, make a motion that we give our event center manager verbal authorization at this time to enter into agreements with artists to purchase talent for the upcoming year, and then ratify a formal memo at a later date to that. How's that?
Memo to that effect?
Yes, a memo to that effect.
Motion authorized, aye.
Aye.
All this time, and that's what we're willing to do?
Well, I also need to, I think we just need to figure out logistics so I know that I can look at maybe hiring at least one of the people. I may sit on one of them for a minute, but I'll try to hire, maybe hire one sooner than later.
Do you have a job description?
Not yet.
Sure do.
Not yet.
What? It's on your desk.
We're all hiring procedures per HR.
No, I don't have a job description yet.
So, our side up is, we'll just do it a month later, so our side up is just doing the two million dollars, and I'll probably figure out how I can...
Shoot.
Amy has not passed the opening of the budget, so how about if I do a check request for two million dollars to be deposited into that fund, and then I'll just do a quick add to the memo that I already sent Amy that I've not proofed yet, so that when we have the public hearing, we can officially have it established. Will that work?
Yep.
So I have your approval to...
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, official, I will do that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Let's go ahead, Daniel.
Dan Kendall, project manager.
Jeff, wondering what made this director facilities?
So your name and your new title?
Danny Rorworth.
Assistant Operations Manager. So we're here to introduce our newest team member. Mr. Rorworth, we're excited to have him, he's doing a great job, he's only been here for a couple of weeks, and I've already got him signed up for some training to help run our HVAC controls for the addition, so we're excited to have him, and he's doing, he's doing a great job, but... He started on the same day that Jeff disappeared on us. Jeff's back.
I'm back.
Better than ever. In his absence, we really didn't know how long he was gonna be gone, so he moved forward pretty aggressively, not knowing that Jeff was as tough as he is, so moved towards the transition of next year. Because of the chain of supplies, you know, the problems that we're having ordering equipment, I moved pretty aggressively in ordering quite a bit of it, knowing that it's not gonna be here anytime soon, but hopefully some of it will show up, even this budget year would be, I think some of it will show up. Some of them are big items, some are little, but anyways, been super busy doing our everyday thing, but we ordered a piece of equipment for the juvenile probation, and tried to fix the air conditioning for the treasurer's office. Brian would appreciate that, it affects him, we're pretty hot on that end of the hallway. We have two rooms getting carpeted this weekend, maybe in Jason's office, we have some thirty year old carpet we're trying to get rid of.
We just said no extravagant spending. We just said that.
Thirty years old. Much newer.
Could've been thirty-one.
Before I come up to work, so, twenty plus years ago.
Doing a little bit of work at the museum, getting ready for that roofing project, hopefully we'll start any day now, just waiting for those fasteners and knowing that their lighting is gonna be a problem when they do that, so we're gonna be ready to take care of that before it's a problem. Question we have for you, me and Jeff were talking about today, when electrician leaves, do we need to go get the tools out of that truck and make sure they end up where they're supposed to be?
Do an inventory. Anytime anybody leaves and they have that much out there, it needs, I mean, I trust all that business stuff, but we do an inventory anyway.
Yeah, I've got inventory list where we bought a lot of tools, that are cabinet tools a year ago, low over a year ago.
We spent a lot of money on it.
But my biggest concern is that if we leave it in that truck, and that truck is parked somewhere other than here, those tools will end up going away.
No, no.
That's my personal feeling.
And visit with Scott too, and make sure, everybody knows, everybody's on the same page.
Any questions for us?
No, honestly. Sorry to make you wait.
No, that's fine.
But we've kinda made it more of a policy to, if we have outside people, to run them through quicker.
That's fine.
Okay.
Good to be back.
It's good to have you back. Thank you very much.
Yes. Good to be seen.
Not viewed. All right, thanks, Jason.
Brian? Go ahead and review.
My turn, all right. Can I say my name and position? So, I've been trying to, since I started working here, create some standard operating procedures, and over time, I've developed six, six different ones that I presented to you and have approved in the past, and so I wanted to combine those into a single procedure, and just turn those six into different chapters. So when I make edits, I could just kinda highlight the edits and then present them to you altogether. And I don't expect there to be major changes to those, but every so often, as, you know, I learn, and as the, you know, we get better with how we take care of things, and more efficient, we'll just wanna make little tweaks and updates. And so, so in this packet that I sent to you, those first six chapters were already approved, but I have highlighted some minor changes that have been made. And then I added two new chapters that I did wanna talk to you a little bit about. But it's going through, and I've numbered the pages, on page five is the first significant edit, if you have it in front of you. And basically, with the recruitment process, rather than having hiring managers directly access Tyler to get the applications, where it's been just easier for, we discovered that Tyler can send HR emails when someone applies, and then we just forward those out. And it's, and it's better and more timely, it feels like, than just expecting hiring managers to just check in all the time and see when things have come in. So that was a change. I added a checklist on page seven, not a change in procedure, just to clarify, you know, so people can go through the steps, oh, have I done this, have I done this, to make sure they're doing all their steps. On chapter two with American, with Disability Act, just minor little tweaks, you know, I added elected officials, supervisor slash elected official, but not really changing the procedure itself. Chapter three, incident reporting, on page twelve, what we did, for, if someone gets injured at work, we had a, just one form that we used for the injuries and also for like property, if there was a property damage. And as we've been thinking about it more, we divided the incident report, so there's one for the employee to do, one for the supervisor to do, and one for witnesses to do, and there's specific questions on each of those forms. So we broke that out, and then a separate one for property damage where there's no injuries. So that was a change in process we've done since we last brought this to you. Okay, I think that was it on those. And then on page fourteen, we got some language and help from auditing, where they wanted us to note short pay on invoices when we go over our deductibles, so just minor, minor changes.
That just makes this policy comply with the county policy.
Yeah, so, and I do wanna put a mention that Christie did spend some time going through this, I appreciate Christie, you doing that, and so made a lot of good recommendations there.
But you're sleeping tonight, huh? But you're sleeping tonight, huh?
Really exciting. And then with the reporting the torts, originally, when I was given a procedure here, I said you could report to a department head and then they would report to the clerk. And per recommendation, we took that out and said just report straight to the clerk if something happened.
That's just cleaner for you guys, right?
So...
Plus, they won't get lost on a department's desk.
That's kind of the way we talked about it anyway.
Yeah. So, minor tweak there. Throughout chapter four, Family Medical Leamback, there's just been, you know, some areas I called it FML rather than FMLA, and I just made it all consistent or had them report to the HR professional. I changed that to just reporting to HR. So, kind of throughout, there's some of those tweaks. Nothing else really substantial in that chapter that I updated. On chapter five, again, kind of wording changes on that 503. It just didn't change the intent. It just changed, just cleaned up some of the wording in it. But on the page 18, I did include a paragraph at the end that says, "HR shall track seasonal employee hours for health insurance eligibility and notify the department, employee, and payroll when the employee nearly reaches the eligibility threshold." Okay, so, just something we intended to do, it just wasn't in there.
How are you going to do that?
So, NOVA time gives us reports, and we don't have a lot of seasonal employees. So, if, we're just going to have to make a note that when they're, if they were scheduled to work six months, if they're getting clustered, they're six months more, then we'd take a look at it.
Okay. I just didn't want to make any extra work for either of you guys. I know your plate's pretty full. So, if it's just looking at NOVA time report, you're done.
Yeah, it's a little extra work, but it was anticipated. Let me set this up. And so, it was, yeah, it's not going to be a heavy burden.
No, I know somebody's got to do it.
Yeah.
As long as it's pretty simple, it doesn't cost. Good.
Yeah. On the chapter six, with salary replacement and movement, this, this one you guys approved just a few months ago. And just a little bit of wording change throughout. A clarification I made, I kind of had it in my head that in grade step increases would be exceptional. And very, and didn't ever want to send out the impression that this was going to be something happening all the time. But I strengthened the language to state that in that paragraph that's highlighted there. So, and it would be just like any other exceptional salary request where we would want the supervisor, department head, elected official to create a memo justifying the reasons why. Send it through auditing, send it through HR, send it to the board commissioners. So, it gives a mechanism for those exceptional situations where this might make sense, you know?
Brian was good about putting, I asked a lot of times just to throw in there, verify funding, verify funding.
Yeah.
So that people remember that, you know, small part.
Yeah.
No small.
No, it's a tiny part. Can stop the train real quick. I did add this 6.03 on page 21. And even after I sent it to you, I've been thinking about the language a bit. And this is talking about reclassification. And part, and I wanted some, just an explanation without reading it, is what happens frequently is when someone leaves their position and we need to repost and rehire, it's a great opportunity to update position descriptions. And 90% of the times when we do that, it's not a substantial change that would justify a change in grade. Right? It's just, we're keeping in the same grade, we're just changing the wording. So, I'm using it, giving that a term, update, right? So, it's a, it's a change in a PD to provide an update with no reclass. And then, if you do make a change that is substantial enough to warrant a reclassification, then this stuff would apply. And I really did not intend to change practice, but just to put it, to clarify a bit. And so, when I'm talking about reclassifying to a higher, higher grade, incumbents in the position will move to the same step in the new grade. And as I thought about it, I thought, well, what about if it's like a two-grade jump? And so, I was wanting to actually change what I sent to say, rather than move to the same step in the new grade, instead say, that provides a 7% increase if new grade is 1 through 14, or a 9% increase if it's between 15.
What if you just, instead of leave what you have in here, but maybe put internal equity, pending internal equity? Because there could, we've had cases where a two-grade adjustment has been made and they have gone straight up. It just depends. But if you put that little caveat of pending internal equity, that allows you to be flexible in maybe moving it to a minimum or something like that.
The one line that you just talked about isn't in there.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Verify, no. Verify funding. Don't say verify funding. I mean, we can put whatever we want. But people don't get an increase if they don't have money.
That's R C. Yeah, when we go to C, it says, most of these will be done during the annual budget process. But I was also going to point out, sometimes it's not.
I agree. There's a lot of requests in between. And if you don't verify funding, they don't give it. That's your thing. They don't have money.
But there's, there's been times, and so, C, you might have to add a sentence also that says, then they just, and this isn't how I'm going to say it, but basically, there's going to be circumstances where the department is restructured.
Right.
And that could potentially happen mid-year. For example,
Yeah.
we just had Dan Kendall in here, and there was a minor adjustment to Danny Whitworth's position when Dave Myler left, because we utilize that timeframe to do the restructure now instead of waiting six weeks. So, if you can have language in there, even if it's, there could be exceptions to this. And you could put pending exceptions to each category that must be approved through HR, auditing, and commission.
Right. And that exception, in my head, had, was covered under exceptional step request. But maybe it's not clear, so I took it...
Well, but that wasn't an exception step. That was a grade. Those were grade adjustments.
So, what step do you place them on with the, with the grade change? Typically, it would be, so, if we're going, if we're going to ver, I could clarify that. So, maybe I could clarify that particular one.
That's the problem with getting too many procedures is all the exceptions.
Yeah.
And how to draw one line to allow for that but not specify it.
Right. Well, that's why with those exceptions, we'll just say justify it, right? So, rather than trying to create reasons for every single one.
And within here, you had, C, so like on there, you could put, C, exceptional placement, or...
There we go.
Something like that. Because you have that in a couple of other spots, and I think that helps. That way, people aren't taking this verbatim. They know that you can also look at something else to reference if there's something different.
I like it. Thank you. So, I, I'll rework that one. Chapter seven, so this is just talking about managing the records. Okay. And a lot of it is just kind of internal stuff. I don't know if you had a chance to read it. Put you to sleep at night. But I did notice something again yesterday on 7.04 A1. It says, personal action forms procedures are in SOP, chapter seven. And I actually decided not to present that particular procedure because I still have some work to do on it. So, I lined that out. And then, on a little bit lower down on the B3, I referenced SOP 11. I decided to hold off on all these new ones, so I'm lining that out too.
On C1, that talks about vacation, under that same 704.
Yeah.
Will you include comp in that? Is there a reason? I, I had a handful of revisions, so I'm sure...
I must've just missed that one.
I was going to say, I'm sure you didn't catch them all.
Okay.
But you did a really good job of getting those down.
Okay, thanks. Yep. And then, there's also a reference to that SOP 11 at the end of page 24 that, that I missed. That, just want to strike that out.
And on D4, will you change that verbiage on the payroll completes data entry? We, I think that's what I missed. This one I had a handful, so if you'll just make that consistent with the others, that's perfect.
Yep.
Because you change it all the time.
Processing.
Yeah. We, payroll does more than data entry, so I asked him to just process it.
Don't want to offend your, the payroll text, because that's, there's a lot more to it. Okay, the rest, I outlined the personnel, the order for the personnel files, and case management records that we do. I did want to call attention to page 27, where it's the 708, record retention schedule. So, this one is a big reason why I'm bringing this forward is we have lots and lots of paper and lots of files that they need to get purged. You know, it's just, we have not followed it this, since I've been here and probably quite a bit prior, so...
We heard about it constantly.
Well, then, you can't wear the files.
Yeah. But I haven't in the two years I've been. And we...
Not since I've been here.
So, anyway, we've got a lot.
We've had them discussions constantly.
We've got a lot. I was talking to Christie about this, and she mentioned that to get authority to destroy documents, it would have to come through you, and it would be a formal resolution. I asked him, Brian, about that spermatome last minute. And so, he said he'd look into if it's a formal resolution or something else.
Well, I know we have a record retention schedule that the commissioners can set, saying, hey, after this amount of years, you can destroy it. That would need to be in a resolution. I'm looking if they commit individually if it's not on the schedule. Because we just had that with the sheriff's office probably about a year ago.
Most times, they all bring in before us.
It's super easy. You just submit a request. I want to get rid of documents per records retention. You get on the agenda, commission approves it each time.
Yeah. Then it's easy.
Just verifies that we approve those documents being discussed then.
Because usually, we'll do it like once a year.
Yeah.
And so, that's, that's the process.
Okay.
It's easy. It's not going to be overwhelming.
Okay. So, so I guess I collect the box and then every so often, just, okay.
Hopefully, we can get those files one of these days.
Okay. We've got 45 minutes and two others after you, so...
Okay, this, I remember the last two pages. So, it's a retention schedule. We've used it based off of best practices and templates from Sherb and all that. And then, yeah, I think that, hold on, let me go through. Okay, the last one, chapter eight, is a new one, is on, on page 30, position classification. And it just, we've had conversations about this. None of this should be a surprise to you. But it does, again, specify, and I think it'll help with our budget cycle too, giving people timelines that, hey, it's part of the budgeting cycle, and you need to go through HR to get these things assigned to grade, and you also verify the funding, you know, work through the budgeting cycles as you do it. So, there's, you've got to go through all those steps to get those positions classified. And again, it's important to me, as I'm working with and trying to help elected officials and supervisors that are handing me position descriptions and wanting them classified, that I'm able to say, this is the way I see it, this, based on the criteria, is going to be a grade 10. But, but you also have to make sure you get that budgeted and approved. So, I can only go so far with my authority of saying, okay, this is where it belongs, but now you've got to go get approval.
And I asked Ryan to put in here, and you can review this and see if the timeline, if the timeline is correct. I asked him to put his recommendations in for January, February.
Okay.
And then, that would give us, you know, three months before the budget process starts. So, if he can have that done, present it to the board, or even have the departments involved, then they would submit that through the May process. But it gets salaries ahead of time, which is what our goal has been lately.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've worked with the departments on that and say, hey, if you're going to make some position changes, give them to me, so I can have them ready for my request at this time.
And we can even clarify that departments need to get those to you in December, which would then give you January, February, however you want to do that. But if you...
That'd be a good discussion when we have our elected officials meeting and advisors meeting, or supervisors.
So, just somehow get that sooner.
So, I can go back and make some of the small modifications we talked about. What do you suggest to, to get this approved?
Make them, make them changes, and then just send us the final. I mean, this is a draft. Send us the final. Like I said, I like, I like the verbiage in there that we're actually agreeing to and not assuming that.
Okay. Okay.
Agreed. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Did you have something?
I just have something for Ryan. It's Jason from downstairs. So, Josh.
Oh. Christie.
Christopher, back on the public defense grant. Dave ended up having a phone conversation with the PDC on Tuesday afternoon and ran through some of the items and the budget that I had put together for him because I was able to get that to him before. He said that they would approve the budget. I apologize, I did not give you guys a copy of it. But it basically just allows for the same dollar amount with the 7% increase for the attorneys. And then, what we did as far as operating is I went with what they proposed for the workload compliance grant, which is the one that they have a little bit tighter on. And that is similar to what you guys had right here. But then, what we did in the formula grant is we took out one public defender because we couldn't fund two with the salary increase and the increase in the rent. Because rent's going to go up to $150,000, so I had to put $65,000 in the formula grant. That's where the position went, basically. And that was all we wanted to get discussed by the PDC to make sure they were okay with that. They did not seem to have any heartburn with it. So, currently, we have a balanced budget, only reducing one attorney and then getting rid of the $10,000 for a part-time position. There, Dave may want to meet with you, maybe in the next few weeks, to discuss his conversation with the PDC. And he vented some of his frustrations with the standards they want them to hold to, but they couldn't funding. And he was a little frustrated about that. So...
I attended the meeting with the employees on what the PDC is. They're ridiculous. Playing careful.
And I was actually, we had that phone conversation on Tuesday at 2:30, and I would have joined other than we had that meeting at 2 o'clock, so I didn't. But we should be good to sign this. That would fund them for next year. We do have a little bit of cost savings. We're going to start utilizing more of the workload compliance grant monies and less on the formula.
So, basically, this just crosses out one of the attorneys.
Not in, so the only budget that you have in front of you on this application is the workload grant.
Okay, okay.
The formula, formula grant, they didn't have listed within here. And that's where we took the position away from. The one change on this one, though, is the $10,016. We took that out and moved it up to cover the salaries.
Okay.
Salaries came out at $440,000 roughly, and they had given us 478, so we just maneuvered within.
And that was the whole deal. All those positions were, were there if we had the funds.
Yeah.
I mean, if we don't have the funds, it'd come out of the county soon.
But I may have some flexibility because... But I may have some flexibility because, uh, they're losing staff fast.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the contract that has presented.
Is that motion on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Jason, you have, what we're going to do when we submit this, um, normally just ask for your signature, not the commission. So there's two different spots that has your signature. There's one without commission signatures and one with. So we're going to submit both of those, and then that way, we got what the commission wants. And then, um, Jared Ricks has asked for a bunch of information from Jason that we'll be supplying them on current budget information, because that was one of the discussions they had, is we're offending the Office of Conflict and all of that. So. If there's a chance I can say that. Thank you. That way I can take care of it.
Going closer to someone to not mention all my keys. I'm sorry.
Good. You got two seconds.
Okay.
And then I got another item here.
There, there's not a written procedure on, on, um, exactly how we go through the process of the salary rate approval forms. But what we do in practice is when there's a background, every time when we hire someone new, we give it to legal to do a background check. And what that usually is, is they just get on, online and do a, a court reach check, which is something Josh can do. And if we shift that from the prosecutors to my office, I think it'll help the, the process go smoother. And then if we do notice something there, then, because most of the time, there's nothing. But if we do notice something that it raises questions, then we could take it to Brian's office. But for a lot of them, where we don't, we just don't, every time it goes to a different location, it has potential of getting a bottleneck or something, and, and we just want to make it more streamlined. And we've talked about this, and anyway, wanted to propose that. And see if you have any heartburn over that.
And, yeah, I know for a while Josh has been doing it, and they still come to my desk. I just like to see if I recognize the name and something, looks into something further, but...
Yeah, Josh has been doing it and just kind of handing it to him just to, to sign it. But if, if, if that's not absolutely necessary, it would help the process go faster if we just occurred that.
And if they're law enforcement employees, they still go through law enforcement.
That's right.
They do their own check. And it's just for everybody but them.
Someone that's been computer lately.
Yes.
I like more and more person looking at them. A part of them have come through law enforcement, but have gone somewhere else now. And, uh, it's good to have, um... I'll think about that one. Have you got any concerns?
No, if there's a flag that comes up and then they go legal, I'm all for trying to streamline it. So I'm okay with that, but if you do think about it, that's fine.
Guess you'll be in this meeting anyway. If I throw it over there and have any concerns. Well, maybe. Go ahead, my side, please. Go ahead.
Thank you.
All right. The next one is, uh, contract for the dentist. Uh, and just for your information, just like the, the Little League football that hadn't gone through legal, this hadn't originally. So we got to make sure that all contracts, that legal has an opportunity to have the opport, to look at them. I mean, there are some things, like say on that Little League, that you didn't want on there, but this one's okay.
There's a new one that we sent over yesterday. Is that the one that's on this? Yeah, that looks like it.
Day 25, 22, has a due date on it. Any questions?
No, this is just paid out of the engine funds. Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the, uh, contract for the new dentist at the sheriff's office.
A motion on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. With that being said... You have something to say? Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not an official meeting?
No, it's not. No, can't...